Okay, I think those who wanted to go on with the evening, that's very fine. And those who do that are staying, I appreciate your attention and willingness to entertain our meeting tonight. Again, Pastor Steve, thank you very much for assisting us tonight. So, as we continue, the next item we have on the agenda is going to be the election of the President of the Council. We have done our roll call for attendance, so we'll go forward and we'll entertain. Well, I do want to recognize our engineer, Mr. Graham is here. Marge Scheretta, who is filling in for our Finance Director, thank you, Marge. And of course, Ms. Farina, one of our Administrative Deputy Director of Administration Services, thank you very much. So, here we go. We're now move on to the election of President of Council. I'm open to accept nominations for the President of Council, and I will need a motion and a second up for that. That is open to the floor, and the chair is open.
I nominate Jeff Petersen.
Second. So we have a nomination for Jeff Petersen. And that's by Ms. Waring. And seconded by Marge Scheretta, thank you, Mr. Scheretta. Are there any?
The move nominations been closed.
Okay, thank you very much. So nominations have been closed, and the motion was made by Councilmember Darryl Holt, and seconded by Ms. Waring. Thank you very much. Well, the clerk called a motion to...
Clerk called a motion to approve member Daniel Jeff Petersen, President of Council.
Member Holt.
Aye.
Member Fonte.
Yes.
Member Peters.
Yes.
Member Holt.
Yes.
Member Waring.
Yes.
Member Schroyer.
C.
Member Scheretta.
Yes.
Six, four, zero against one abstention.
All right, well, with that being made, that is concludes with six, four, and one abstention. With those nominations being approved and closed, they're now so recorded that Mr. Daniel Jeff Petersen will assume the role of President of Council. Please come forward. Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion and second to open nominations for Vice President of Council.
I nominate Darryl Holt for Vice President of Council.
Is there a second? Are there any other nominations?
There are only closed nominations.
For a second?
Second.
All right, nominations are closed. Clerk, please have a roll call for the confirmation for Darryl Holt for Vice President of Council.
Member Holt.
Aye.
Member Fonte.
Yes.
Member Peters.
Yes.
Member Holt.
Yes.
Member Waring.
Yes.
Member Schroyer.
C.
Member Scheretta.
Yes.
Six, four, zero against one abstention.
Okay, that concludes our agenda for the organizational meeting, entertaining motion to adjourn.
So.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? You're adjourned from the organizational meeting. I'd like to now call to order the special committee of the whole meeting, Monday, December 2nd. Seven nineteen P. M. Then would you mind calling the ball again?
Member Holt.
Here.
Member Fonte.
Here.
Member Peters.
Here.
Number Waring.
Here.
Number Holt.
Yes.
Here.
Number Schroyer.
Here.
Number Scheretta.
Here.
Seven present.
All right, thank you. Before we get into first item on the agenda, financing property, may I have a motion and second to allow Police Chief Menock to address Council?
It was second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion carries. Chief?
Evening, everyone. I'd like to thank Council and Mayor Wilder for saving us a few minutes tonight. The Police Department here in the city has an event coming up in 2020 that we're very proud of, and we're excited for the community to be proud of too. When my Sergeant Matt Buzzard became aware of it, he undertook a fairly large multifaceted project, because that's what he does. And I'm really happy with all the stuff he's done so far, and I think the community is going to be excited about it too. So I'm going to let him explain that for you tonight, and thank you.
Thank you, everyone, thank you, Chief Menock for calling me up here. Before I get going, I just want to congratulate Council on your election, and Mr. Peters, we both Vice Presidents again. Mayor Wilder, thank you for some time tonight, I know it's a tricky night, but I do appreciate it. As Chief Menock had said, next year, we do have an event coming up in 2020, is our Centennial event, it is our 100th Year Anniversary of the Police Department. I found out about this when I took over, when I took over as Sergeant in 2017, I started writing under a report, and in front of the report, it says established in 1920. It caught my eye last year, and I was writing it because obviously 2020 is coming up. I did some research, tracked down the original ordinance that set us up, and confirmed it. I took this information to Chief, told him I had some ideas, some wild, some not so wild, and he has been gracious enough to just let me run with it. As everyone will see in front of you, all the council members, you received part of this project, included a challenge point that we actually made up for the department that celebrates our 100th Year. Mayor Wilder received it in a little nicer container due to the fact that he was one of our four living Chiefs. He was Chief from 2011 to 2017, actually hired me with, I was in his first hiring group, so he makes good decisions. But, you know, he makes good decisions. So a little bit about the history, I don't want to take up too much time, I know we've all been here a while, and we're still a little while ago, but a little bit about the history. As I said, we were established in 1920. Most people probably know the history of North End. We were plodding out in 1831, that's the big, you see on our patches, Samuel Battle riding the area, plodding out 23 plots in the center of town. From 1831 to about 1905, when we were incorporated, Lady Township Marshal stood care of the law enforcement in the area. In 1905, upon our incorporation on November 21st, we hired our own Village Marshal, Manaya Reyes, who took over all law enforcement purposes within the village. It stayed that way until 1920. We were changing North End in 1918, obviously, it became unpopular to be associated with anything in German around 1718, so we changed North End. In 1920, as the population continued to grow, and the law enforcement continued to become more and more, and the Village Marshal by himself just wasn't able to do it. On August 1st, 1920, Village Council passed ordinance 466, that established our North End Police Department. Then on Monday, October 18th, 1920, the very first police officer, Jake LeBeau, was hired by Village Council in 2020. He was only an officer for a couple of months, and it turned over to a guy named Harry Williams, who was an officer for almost a year, and then he was switched out by the current Village Marshal at the time, S. J. Kurtzman. And S. J. Kurtzman was put in office on September 1st, 1922. He was, at the time before becoming a North End Police Officer, he was a Village Marshal. So you had Village Marshals in the Police Department, but they worked separate. After he was put in office, they did away with hiring Village Marshals, they hired another member of the Police Department. Mr. Kurtzman was our first Police Chief ever, appointed September 22nd, 1920, September 1st, I'm sorry, 1922. Since then, we've had 10 other gentlemen wear the badge of top law enforcement officer, most currently Chief Menock. And it's been, it's been a fantastic 100 years from what I can read, from talking to all retirees. This project is kind of taking a life, but it's on. At first, it was just going to be something simple, let's get some challenge points. All right, the history, so we have it all documented. I spent hours reading through council records from 1905 all the way up until almost now. You guys talk an awful lot about streets, gutters, sidewalks, sewage lines, terribly fun stuff to read through. But it has been I O N, and I've come across little things in there. I'm sorry, I'm not a public, I speak to the public every day, but I'm not a public speaker, so here's some laws, that's what that's about. But anyways, I just want to say, you know, I know for me and for everybody at Fox today, enjoy working for the city of North End. I've only been here eight years, I've been a Sergeant for a couple of years. It's been fantastic, the guys all love it, and you know, this is, it's bigger than any of us can bring to do it. It's important to understand that, you know, North End as a community, there's no invisible wall around North End to keep the bad out and the good in. You know, there's reason that our crime rates are low, you know, we hired the officers, we trained them up well. We've done that, from what I can see, for 100 years continuous. And you said no visible wall, but there is a blue line that stretches through the community. We held that line for 100 years, and plan on holding it at least as long as I'm here for another 100 years, or we'll train the generations after us to hold that line. So, I thank you for your time. And I will say, in coming years, you'll see things pop up as we go. We've got the challenge points, in the springtime, you're going to see some street banners swinging up honoring the 100th Year. You've probably already noticed the police frisiers have E. Cows on them, it's the same E. Cows on the coin. And there'll be an unveiling of a plaque that honors not only that first ordinance, we're going to put the set deck in, it'll be set on stainless steel, a bit of a record, but it'll also recognize and honor all the Chiefs we've had. Over the 100 years span, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Peters, yes, sir. Again, Chief Menock, Sergeant Buzzard, thanks for your initiative on recognizing the 100th Year is coming up. That means a lot. Several years ago, well, quite a few years ago, we celebrated the 100th Year for Friday. And it just means a lot for me personally, but I think our community will appreciate your endeavor. Thank you for these handsome challenge points. It's going to sit on my counter, on my desk, handsomely. But thank you for your initiatives and your hard work in this, and we look forward to making that celebration with us and honoring those who have worn the uniform of our Police Department and had the badge of office. I can't thank you enough for this initiative, both of you and the rest of the department, thank you. There, Mr. Peters.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Appreciate it. Ready to do, get to work?
Get to work.
All right. First up, financing property, Chairwoman Waring.
So when we received the agenda the other day, we also received a...
Before you do that, I'm going to excuse myself. I'm not getting kicked out, by the way, I believe, I live on the golf course, we can't talk about these, so everybody knows. I'm not getting kicked out this time. I'll come back in a little bit, then.
Okay. We'll get one more down. Thanks, Marge.
You should receive the packet, we've kind of outlined some of the details, or just kind of a total, that I know Pat and Tim have talked for a little while, we're going to land the phone, and there's always just a lot of questions about what we're going to do with Arrowhead, and is it profitable, is it not? Just a lot of different options that's supposed to be developed, is that going to sound for a city? So, I think you've done a really nice job, Pat, with just kind of looking at what the management has done, and looking at some different numbers, and really kind of getting a handle on what the place can manage of all wars, the pool, and then the restaurants and all that. So I'm going to let you talk about it, but thank you for your work on it so far.
Okay, thank you very much. And before I begin my remarks, I'd like to allow the Law Director to address a matter that we had been working on as well.
There we go. Thank you. I was recently asked to look at the very reason that member Scheretta had left the room, and that was an issue with where he resides, and his location in the vicinity of the subject property, which is the Golf Course in Arrowhead. And so, member Scheretta, knowing that he has a conflict of interest because of where he resides, adjacent, almost abiding, the Golf Course, he has recused himself so that he would have the appearance of being involved in making decisions, and trying to deliberate one way or another, where he might receive some sort of personal gain, or avoid some sort of financial detriment to that. Along with that, I was also asked for member Fonte. And the difference between member Scheretta and member Fonte is member Fonte's residence is a greater distance from his property. And so I researched this thoroughly through the ethics opinions on the issues of conflicts of interest, and specifically regarding real property. And it's clear from that research that the issues that are planned for discussion this evening, that they are highly unlikely to lead to consequences that would have a definite and direct beneficial or detrimental financial impact on his property. And so for that reason, I've given member Fonte my legal opinion that he does not have conflict of interest to address these issues this evening, so we welcome him to participate in the discussion and debate.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so, we shouldn't be thinking of discussions about Arrowhead as if it's the preferred way of involving politics. We can have a very engaging conversation about really what direction the city wants to go. It's you, the elected official, are the policymakers who will set these decisions to go forward. I'm not looking for any kind of decisions tonight, this is a very complex issue. I emailed you late on the weekend what I believe was a draft management agreement that Tim and I had been working on with the present operators for months to get to this point. And this is what I would hope to be the first meeting, and it might be, you know, I guess unfortunately, most would probably be talking, laying out the background on this to get to this point. But I would ask that the Council President schedule further committee meetings with the council chair in the weeks ahead, so that we can continue the dialogue. What we may talk about tonight, it may just be certain pieces, and then as the weeks go on, we can talk about others. You'll have questions, and then you can bring the bad up at a later time. So, having said that, the overriding purpose that the administration has set out to do is try to preserve the options and the flexibility for the Council and the Mayor to be able to chart the direction of what they want the Arrowhead properties to be. There was a 2012 master plan that charted a certain direction for that, those grounds. And I'm not sure if those are still in play today. And by working with the Council and the Mayor, I don't believe that there's a unanimous decision to go one way or the other. There just needs to be a lot of dialogue. So how did we get to where we're at today, just from the standpoint of 2019? So at the beginning of the year, as we were looking to exit the drip net lease that existed up to that point, I felt that it was important to engage a consultant to do an assessment of property. And if the city was going to intend at some point to change the direction with new management or new lease in the city, we would need to know what is the condition there, what are the things that might be of concern to us in changing course. So, we hired an environmental design group, they had done work for the city in years past, so we were familiar with their work product. And I asked them to undertake an assessment, an audit, an analysis, an inventory of the operations at the Golf Course, this was done in cooperation with the operators at the time. What we received back was a very lengthy, detailed report. And we should also note that, in my opinion, environmental design group gave us an honest assessment of the course. There's no dog in the race for them, there's no contract to be awarded to do some kind of development there. They knew that when we kicked up, this was a one and done, and I wanted someone that could understand the complexities of the golf business. They had been involved with City Green and their recent undertaking of management arrangement. So that process was completed, and at the end of it, we moved on to then, okay, we know what we're getting into, now we need to find out who we are going to get into it with. So we developed a RFP, a Request for Proposal, and followed a process through that, then is not quite finalized. The review committee will be meeting tomorrow in the late to take their final recommendation, that we'll be looking forward back to the City Council. And during this process, we received four proposals. And because this was being done at not really an ideal time, the ideal time would be when no one's playing golf there, but this was about mid-May, the season had already commenced for about six weeks. Restaurant was open, and the pool was about to open. So we went through that and felt that the next best approach to keep the commitments honored for those that were using the facility was to enter into an interim management group. And we selected an operator out of the four RFPs that we fell. We were able to keep Arrowhead moving while the rest of the RFP process concluded, and the Council and the Mayor would be able to ascertain what direction we wanted to go. The interim management agreement ran from May 31st to November 30th. And obviously, as we were past that time, as we got closer to the election, I felt that it was in the city's best interest to allow the outcome of that process to unfold, and then bring the matter before the newly elected Mayor and, as it turned out, and council members. So we have executed a 60-day extension of this agreement, under the same terms. And this will allow Council two months to figure out what we would really like to do here. We should note that even if we were to choose nothing, if we were to choose to close the facility completely, there still are costs associated with that to the city. It is 100 acres of grounds, and there would need to be grounds maintained. That may not involve maintaining all 100 acres, but allowing significant portions of that to grow back to a natural state would then bring up concerns with nuisance animals, deer populations, and a whole bunch of other wildlife that the neighbors in that area may not be willing to accept. To maintain grounds in some capacity, we're talking about hiring people. Most of you know that our park and rec department presently, with the makeup of our parks, is operated with very few full-time employees. It's mostly seasonal summer workers that do most of that work. Expanding the park capacity by more than doubling it, with 100 acres, would make that job untenable. I put together a group of our department heads that would be involved in this process if this facility were to close, to help us come up with an idea of what it would take to maintain the premises while the city was working on perhaps a different action. So Park Department, Building Maintenance Department, Police Department, Fire, a whole bunch of others as well. And we addressed a number of issues. Security would be an issue, it's 100 acres of monitored land. We'd be concerned with potential dumping on the site, because it's so secluded in certain areas. So, you know, certain potential crime elements that could occur there. And so it would require additional security likewise, on the potential on fire, MMS. We have cart paths, residents could interpret for walking paths and use it, and to the extent that someone fell or had a medical issue deep on the course, to be able to get an ambulance there, and that kind of thing also weighed in our consideration. In addition to just closing it, there would be contract liability for events that are scheduled to go on there, and what that would entail. And then we do have a historic building that is in the register, and what would we do with the maintenance of that facility while we were trying to make a decision? I spoke with three different developers to get them, to get just an idea of how long it would take, if we were to pursue some type of development there. And obviously, developing part of it is different than developing all of it. But if we were to develop all of it, all three developers indicated to me that this is close to a five-year process before dirt would be turned. And, you know, you have to keep in mind that the area is zoned park and inclusion. To do any type of development there, we would have to rezone it. Rezone it involves community buy-in, lack of community buy-in would result most likely in what Jackson Township faced with a referendum on the development of Tammy Shannon. And that could cause delays for years, as that process works its way through. So, the developers are not going to be able to finance it until they know a project, they're not going to know a project until they can get the zoning, they're not going to know the zoning until we can get the community buy-in. You can see how it's all interconnected, and why it takes so long to move on something like that. So what I wanted to try to do is to find a way to minimize the costs to the city while the policymakers figure out what they want to do. And the best course of action for the short term is to continue with the operations that are there, that would need to be different than what has been done in the past. And what you have laid out in the draft agreement begins to address that. Some of the highlights, just for those that are here, seeing me in the first in this conversation, I'm very pleased that everybody was hanging in there. We put in, first of all, that the contract length for draft, this draft management agreement, be five years. So that if we start with, you know, true deliberations today, in... in 2020 and the city moves in that direction, then we can exit that program and terminate operations in five years. We've also put in provisions that we can exit the agreement if it isn't profitable, two years in a row. So we're not interested in trying to pour additional financial resources into it just for purposes of keeping it flowing if it's unprofitable. Our motivation is not to make a profit. Our motivation is to cover our costs. And to the extent that there is a profit, we would like to be able to present that option to the mayor and to the council as to what to do with their share of profits. The administration has been very involved with this from the get-go. Catherine and myself have been working on this every week, every few days, and every week since the beginning of the year, even more so since the end of May when the management took over. There's been extensive city supervision. We have extensive transparency in their financial records and all the different records that are required to give us a true insight as to what's happening with those operations. So there have been regular calls, regular meetings, just monthly budgets, actual performance against those budgets. And what we've come with is that we've seen now for the last six months what it should really be run like at the facility and what the true potential is. And a few weeks ago, I had said to you that I stated with great conviction that I believe that this property and this operation can be profitable and not be made upon the city. And I do believe that. And having had an opportunity to see how the process works, we would hope that in the 30,000-foot view, generally, in the months that the course is open, pool is, you know, opens in a shorter period. But when the golfing begins in late March and runs into November, there's sufficient cash flow from operations to address the monthly expenditures there. When we reach the point where the facility closes for the season and we are closed for the season, effective December 1st, I'm sorry, November 1st, we shut down just the regular restaurant operation there and continued with banquets, special events, meet groups of larger sizes, where warrants have employees there and the costs associated with that so that we're not running it to lose more money on that. So that will remain to be the case until the beginning of March. But what carries you through those months, November, December, January, February, and into March, assuming that there was no backup business, would be the deposits that you should receive at the beginning of the year that are for league memberships, play there, individual memberships, pool pass memberships. All these are deposits that are made by people that want to use this facility. You're familiar with that, that our dog with pool and people bypasses months in advance to get that so that they have that done. Those deposits should be what carry us through and keep this from turning into something that it was before. When we took this over in May, we did not have advantage of those deposits. So through the working of the group that's in there now and the marketing plan that we put together, we've been reaching out to golf leagues and individual memberships and selling pool passes and moving forward that rather aggressively here in November and December, where that might not normally occur until right around the first of the year. Again, we have transparency in the bank account that we can look into that. This is a true management agreement unlike before. The city maintains all decision-making authority. This is a third-party agreement for someone to manage the facility, but we are in charge. The base management fee that was bid in the RFP was $6,000 per month. The management fee during this interim period has been $5,000 per month. To incentivize management to run a profitable operation and that was a consideration for the council to look at, we were looking at an incentive fee of 50%. So we can split the profit 50/50. We have instituted caps on spending authority. There is an annual budget. There'll be a line item for certain things much as what you have here. We set a $1,000 line item expense limit. So you can't exceed your line item of more than $1,000 without city approval. Caps on contracts that are in excess of $2,500 for 12 months for any affiliate of the local golf. We put caps on capital expenditures when an item exceeds more than one year in life and costs more than $2,000. And these are just, you know, kind of a big overview that you'll, when you read through this and look at it, you'll get to see some of the things that I mentioned and may have other questions that arise. So I just wanted to be able to present to all of you in a room at one time the nature of the agreement that you have to look at and how we got to this point as early this year and that I hope to add up to the council at this point.
First of all, Pat, thank you for the detailed overview. I think it's important that everyone understands where we were, where we've come and where we're going there. I do have a question. After the initial five-year term, looking at the terms of the agreement, it looks like the only options are if it's mutually agreed upon two subsequent five-year terms.
That is correct. That is just a draft. So it can be changed. And, you know, part of the logic in the five years is that there are, you know, there is certain equipment that is needed and is necessary to run the facility as far as it relates to golf. And we wanted to make sure that whatever agreement that we enter into is probably synchronous with any agreements for buying and losing equipment.
The only reason I ask that is, my only concern would be is if you, during the initial five-year term, you're going to be accepting RFPs for uses to that property. Say you come up with a use in the fourth year maybe not being implemented until year six. Then you're into another five-year term. Just something to consider.
I think if the council and the mayor were moving forward in that direction and we reached a point that in year four it looked like the definite avenue was changing, I think we could rather than renewing the five-year agreement, negotiate a new agreement that covers that period of time.
So on the agreement, would you have a deposit with these folks? The management interim group that's with a five-year term and a five-year option? These are deposits that they have? Or if they don't perform? I mean, I know there's performance clause in that if they don't perform two years in a row, that we can remove that? So that would be one thing, is there a deposit? If not, what's the annual budget that we have set up for these folks?
We are, once we enter, or it looks like we're going to enter into an agreement where they will be responsible for putting together an annual budget. But that has not been done because they're not on the hook for that yet to produce that document. What we do have is just six months of actual operating costs over this May to the, I don't know, time period.
Okay, this is one other quick question. So the prior group had managed to, they inherited a lease from the prior people in '05, '06, which was when we were at the peak of market. So it was probably a little bit higher. I'm just curious, what's the difference between the initial people and these current people? The difference in monthly obligations? So you said six K a month is what it is currently, right? What was it for the prior folks? What was their monthly value? If you recall?
Okay, so as a, just for first point of clarification, you said they inherited it. They didn't inherit the student. So they looked at those terms and decided to enter into that agreement on their own condition. That agreement is a completely different animal than what this is. What you had there was a triple net lease where the city was not being involved in the management of the facility. It was, they were running it for their own benefit. The terms of that initially, 10 years ago when it began, is that they were to pay rent, the rent was, my recollection, I pulled it up in the stack. My recollection is between $8,000 to $10,000 a month that it started at. And then there were capital expenditure requirements that the city had passed in the agreement that approximately, again, in my recollection, $50,000 to $80,000 a year in capital improvements were to be done in addition to property taxes being paid. So the, as long as the city was getting money, the city said, you know, you run it however you see fit and it was no involvement. This is not that.
This sounds like a better plan.
We are involved in this. And there is a high level of oversight from a number of different people. There will be the finance department, administration, grounds management, our building maintenance people. And we have people that check in to see what's going on and making sure that everything is being taken care of. Dom, are you good so far?
Well, I think that's just a point because we just got it a few days ago. We need to look at it. This was just an overview. And now we need to take a look at it and then come back with questions. We're not rushing anything through. We're doing it in January to even enter into another agreement. And so I think that's what we need to do.
Darren, you have time? We're looking at the short term. We might should, yeah. Hope not.
Good here. Close.
As we look at this, Pat's described creating a five-year bridge to give us ample time for deliberation. And I think that's a very wise approach. I think we've probably got four uses of the site as we look at it. Current golf and banquet option. We could have residential development. We could have, consistent with the community master plan, some sort of economic use that's compatible with the adjoining neighborhoods. Or you could just simply convert it to a park. And I would encourage council to really consider having a professional analysis conducted each of these four options because they're incredibly nuanced. Each of them has a financial impact on our bottom line. And I think you ought to know going in when you make a decision. There are engineering challenges that are associated with the site, particularly ingress/degress, stormwater management, et cetera. You ought to know what they are if we're going to pursue one path of development. And then there may be some development schemes that maximize the return of the taxpayers and protect the neighborhoods. And I think a professional firm could help us identify what some of those potential options might be. So I think we ought to take advantage of the option we have. Let's look at this thing long-term and really understand what the nuances are before we find ourselves hip-deep and facing some problems that we can't easily resolve. For example, stormwater management. So that's just my, my urge that we, you know, after the first year, we made it to ask the administration to get out and help us, help us map something out. I think there's some people who combine both urban planning and the financial analysis with the engineering skills to give us this sort of larger composite picture of what the options are. And maybe there's something else that we have to be considering. Let's, let's make sure we've looked at everything before we walk away from what we've got. Hold on, Dom, do you have something?
Yeah, I just want to say, since the new management has taken over, I do golf there at the league and I've seen some vast improvements in that time. I think it is a community asset and we should give it every chance we can. Make it a viable golf course. I think we're looking at this differently now. So we need to take the time to thoroughly analyze it and give the administration the opportunity to stay on top of it, which didn't happen before, as we know. My, my only concerns in this is that we need to build in some type of improvement process, whether it's money set aside through the operational costs or an end-of-the-year fund that can come back and be used for golf. Pat's treaties taking out improvements to the banquet room and the pool. Because it is, it is well-used when I'm there. And I think if you haven't been down there, then go through the building facility. It does take dollars as far as maintenance to keep it nice. But the problem before was there was nothing built in for that, for that process to occur. And I think it behooves us to really look at that to say, what improvements are we going to make the next two or three years? Does it make sense to put bocce out there? Do we do something differently with some of our recreational uses, knowing that the banquet center and the pool are still viable options for us besides the golf? The building's nice, it really is. It just needs updating and then process some maintenance and capital dollars. So I guess that's my point to pack the administration, Catherine, and the mayor now. How are we going to address those things? We can't just let things go. We have to continually improve what's there to attract the league, like attract pool memberships, attract the other recreational uses. So there was a point in time when families would look at that for weddings or showers or retirements. And it wasn't up to par as far as, like this building is now. And I think it's critical that we, that's how you sell it. If you want to have a nice event, but you also have to have it maintained and improved to that point that people want to come in and rent. So those are my, those are my things to consider. I mean, I enjoy it. I think it's a great asset to the community. I would want to give it every opportunity to become a profitable golf course, at least to break even with maintenance. And we're not in it just to drive profit. We're in to, you know, to have it as a recreational use for our residents also. But I think right now we're at an advantage with somebody that knows what they're doing and has other golf courses that we can utilize those skills with the washful eye of the whole process. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Dom. Anybody else? Dom, yeah, is there anybody else here?
No.
Well, go ahead. You go first.
Okay, what's the balance that we have on the property right now?
I don't have the exact number with me today, but I'm just sort of in discussions with the former finance director and we look to have that paid off in the next few months.
That's right. So when I was doing some checking, the golf course is usually between 110 and 120 acres. So what do we have, 105?
Approximately.
Okay. So just like anything, like our homes or our businesses, we always have to lock more capital improvement money. You know, you can't wait till things break. And I think, I see what happened here, you know? Things just eroded, you know? If you don't have your hand on the pulse sometimes, you know, things will slip around, slip by, and you might go back and fix them. But I see a huge potential here because a lot of golf courses are closing. I think there's a huge untapped potential with event centers and restaurants and slight entertainment and golf. Even if there's not, I think, you know, 18-hole golf.
entertainment and golf, even if there's not, like, you know, 18 hole golf, I think it'd be a 12, you know, or whatever, people are busy and it's expensive. But I just think there's huge potential with mixed use that you could use there that would conform nicely with your residential feel, because it's quick access to the expressway. We could draw more activity in. So I think there's a huge untapped potential here. I think marketing, promotion, and well-run organization could definitely make this, not only just to break even, but actually a little profit center for the city if it's reaccomplished, like, you know, entrepreneurial enterprise.
Thank you, Dom. All right, Pat, thank you. I appreciate the update and the overview. Pat, looking at the schedule, our next meeting to put this on committee will be December 16th. I'm assuming you will probably go on Christmas break the following week.
Would the council president be interested in having?
Special counsel.
A special committee?
Next, next council meeting. Yeah, let's do that. Let's do that. Let's get a special committee before the regular council next week.
And then you deny it on the 16th.
Yeah. Good idea. I like it. Okay.
We have motion to do that.
Yes, she has a motion. Motion that we have a special council. The whole meeting for next Monday. The purpose of the meeting will be for sole discussion of management agreement. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. All right, motion carries. Will be set for next, next Monday, tonight. Okay, for those in attendance, new, new members in attendance, our next order of business will be in. Oh, yeah. Going to be asking for a motion and a second to enter into executive session. This is not open to the public. We will be moving to another room. Not sure how long we're going to be in there, so as all intents and purposes, the meeting, as we know, is concluded, so enjoy your evening. Okay, at this time, I entertain a motion and a second to enter into executive session.
Motion for the executive session.
Executive session is for a larger, more specific subject of community and public matters. Motion, second to, by your own.
Your own.
Your own. Your own, screw it. Aye.
Here.
Yes.
Your own.
Yes.
Absolutely.